It's 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. First, we'll look at the approval of the agenda. We do have, I guess, one item to add to our agenda that we received earlier. I guess, online, the item is already there. We're adding Item C, Serial License for Mariachi Grill, under Items for Commission Action. So we'll add that item. Commissioners, do you have any items to add?
I do not.
Okay. And looking at the consent agenda, I'd like to remove Items D and G and bring it to Items for Commission Action also. So are there any other additions? Could you have any modifications, Commissioner?
No, I don't.
With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, Items A, B, C, E, F, H, and I.
Second?
And then would that be the addition of Item C also?
Did I not say C? I'm sorry.
Well, come on. We added Item C under...
Oh, that was... Okay, now I'm confused. That was under Consent Agenda Action.
Well, just the general adoption of the consent agenda with the modifications.
All right. You want a motion to adopt it?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're just adopting the agenda at this point?
Right, with the addition of Item C.
Okay. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now Consent Agenda...
Shall I try again?
Try again. You did such a beautiful job.
I move we approve the consent agenda, Items A, B, C, E, F, H, and I.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Presentation. Presentation of AA, AAA Traffic Safety Award to Officer Townley and the IPD Traffic Safety Committee.
Evening.
Chief Harrison.
I'd like to introduce you to David and Jennifer, if you guys would like to come up, David is with KDOT, and he's our Traffic Safety Liaison, LEL, Law Enforcement Liaison. And Jennifer is with AAA, so I'm just going to turn the mic over to them and let them take over.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. As he said, I'm Jennifer Haw with AAA Kansas. I'd like to thank everyone for having us today to present Chief Harrison with the first AAA Traffic Safety Award for Independence, and also thank Dave Corp. He identifies outstanding agencies and helps us get them to submit their applications for the award. More impressively tonight, this is their first award, and it is at the Platinum level, which is the highest level of the awards. There are only 16 other PDs that qualified for the Platinum Award in Kansas this year. Chief Harrison's agency is being recognized for SAFE, their work at the SAFE program, the seat belts are for everyone with Independence High School. Oh, hello. Snuck in on me. And they're also being recognized for the use of the Fatal Vision Obstacle Course and for enforcing seatbelt policy within their department with employees and passengers of department vehicles. They're also being recognized for their work in education with back-to-school safety, a safety check lane for car seats, and Walk Safe to School Day. In enforcement, they're being recognized for their strong, high-visibility enforcement, including Click It or Ticket. And also in engineering for a traffic flow redesign that eliminated uncontrolled intersections. As a result of their work, adult seatbelt use is up from 72% in 2012 to 87% in 2016. Teen seatbelt use is up from 80% to 89% in that same period. Child passenger seat use is up from 77% to 85%. And seatbelt use among those SAFE-programmed teens in the high school is up to 93%, which is a great number.
Sure.
So we want to thank you again for supporting the Independence PD and their work in traffic safety, and it's a special pleasure to present Chief Harrison and Mr. Townley with the Platinum Traffic Safety Award.
All right.
Before we sit down, Tim, I want you to step over here, if you would. About a year ago, maybe, I guess maybe it's been a couple of years ago, Tim volunteered to step up and do traffic safety for our department, and he does a wonderful job. He does a lot of statistical work. And he came to me and said, "I want to start a traffic safety committee. It's a part of the AAA Safety Award." And so I said, "Yeah, go for it." And so Tim has managed that traffic safety committee and just given our community more opportunity to have a voice in what they expect from city government. And I just, really, the credit for this award goes to Tim Townley and the officers that are out there doing the job every day, and I'm just super impressed with the effort that everybody's put into it, and I'm really proud to serve with these guys. So thank you, Tim, very much.
Thank you. We're seeing a lot of citizen involvement with the new committees that Chief Harrison has formed, and it's exciting to see us broaden out, to get more input, and the results like this, with the statistics changing and the safety coming back to protecting our children and even us. Thank you again, Chief Harrison. The next item on the agenda, Item for Commission Action, consider the 2019 budget request from the library.
I'm Tom Sewell, representing the City Libraries Board and presenting the budget to the city. We really don't have a whole lot to present. One thing that's a little unusual on the budget that we haven't had in the past is we're requesting an additional $60,000 from the city this year to do the children's library improvement. And this is an area that needs the improvement, needs the work done, and a lot of children use that particular area of the library, and we think that's going to be a great addition and is really necessary. So we're not asking really for any other, any mill increase or anything like that, just to, I know that's quite a bit of money, but I think it's for a good cause there. And I'd be willing to try to answer any questions the commissioners might have about the budget.
Have you got a chance to review?
I have reviewed it, but I don't have any questions.
Just to be clear, so I understand $60,000 on top of the, we normally give you around $20,000, $25,000. This is 60 on top of that?
Top of that, and it's a one-time request.
Right. So a total request is, and that's all from the city?
Yes. $85,000 total there.
So can you explain in more detail about the renovation of the children's library section for the $60,000? What does that entail?
I'm probably not the best to explain that, but Jerry maybe is here, the librarian, and she can probably go into that a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've talked about it on a board level.
So we want to put up a wall in the children's department. There's always been a blind spot where the librarians can't see, and the children can get in there and do whatever children like to do when they're not supervised. So we would like to put up a wall. And originally, the teen department was supposed to be on the first floor, but it was right next to the large print area, and if you can imagine, those two areas didn't really work well. So right from the beginning, after we built the addition, they moved the teens upstairs, which caused all kinds of difficulties, and we've been coping with that for the last 10 years. But the children's librarian's desk area was never appropriately positioned, and the desk itself is literally falling apart because it was a donated thing, and it was from a home furniture type, and it wasn't commercially available, so it is not held up well to children climbing all over it, which they do. They like to sit on the desk and talk to Charlene. And then there's never been adequate storage up there. All of the materials that the children's department needs and the teen department needs to do, all the crafts that they do, which they do hundreds and hundreds of programs with craft, all of that is stored downstairs. And so if they're working on a project up at their desk and they can't leave their desk, and they forget something, they're stuck and they can't get to it. So if we had it all up there in the storage area, then that would help them be able to do their jobs more efficiently. And finally, we would like to get movable shelving up there because we could get more kids up there when we have a large program. We could shove the movable shelving back behind, like we do downstairs, if you've ever been there when we have a large event. We move all the shelving back so that we have more space, and that's what we would like to do up there for that as well. And the children's shelving that we have now is too tall for children, and they can't access the top shelves, and this would make everything on the eye level for the children to be able to actually pick out their own books. So that's our plan. Any questions?
Have you had anyone work on a drawing to show the modifications, or...
We had the Heckmans come over, and they gave us an estimate of the drawing of how much that would cost, and that's included in there. They didn't seem to think there was any problem, other than we're in a historic building and we can't put the wall all the way to the ceiling. That's the only problem that they suggested that we were going to have.
Questions?
I went and met with Jerry beforehand and sort of got my questions answered. I mean, it seems like something we need to do. I don't know about coming up with the $60,000, but clearly, you need to be able to supervise the kids, and they have areas where the employee cannot see the kids, and the shelves are not really the right shelves for the kids, and so on. But I do think it's something that we need to do. I just don't know how to fund it at this point.
And that was going to be my comment. I met with Jerry earlier, our staff did, and went over this, and it's certainly a worthwhile project, but just so you understand, as Gary mentioned, if you pass it now, then it puts a squeeze on the rest of the city capital budget as we're preparing that. So that's why it's kind of odd that we're preparing it or passing this now without comparing it to other priorities in the general fund, which is where this would come from, which is where the least amount of money is. Anyway, and not to say this is a bad project at all, it's just the timing. Sometimes, as Gary said, we don't know what the total priorities are as well, but...
That's always an issue with the library because of the way our statute's written. We have to start early. We were hoping to use some of the Quality Life Funds that were passed for the library, the pool, and the civic center.
And it's dwindling faster. I can't remember what the balance is now, but it's close to, I think it's not much more than $60,000 now. I don't remember anything the last time we saw balance, but I can't remember.
But the library hasn't really gotten any of it, have they? In the past?
In the past? I think so. I don't know.
From ours, our records, we found a request for $10,000, but we couldn't ever determine whether we actually got that or not, from our records, so...
I remember something coming up about that two or three years ago. You know, it's clear the need is there. It's just the money, but I think it also points out another need that we've got, the facilities of Quality of Life with that fund dwindling, but yet, how are we looking down the road for program changes or corrections or maintenance? And I think as we look at our budget, I think we talked about a line item dealing with the pool. I think these are some of the things we're going to have to bring in to a plan. It does have to be considered with other features. We can't ignore the library. It's as important entity as any of the others. It needs to be programmed in that we can move that direction. Whether, you know, at this point, without seeing the budget, I don't think I could say, "Yes, you could have it," but I'm not going to say, "No, you can't." I think it's something we need to put in and look at that total picture of what it's going to take to keep the library a viable part of the community, reaching the needs, keeping the cities, the kids safe and the staff safe. And also, like we talked, I think, last meeting about the pool address, maintenance issues. We're going to have maintenance issues there at the library soon, too, with the HVAC systems, plumbing systems, and other things, so...
The part of this is a request for repairs on the building, too. The windows are broken. There's a door that needs to be replaced, that sort of thing. I think that came to like $6,000 under the estimate, which is also included in there.
Yeah.
Generally, maintenance on the building, the library takes care of unless it gets to be a large amount, that's like the $6,000. We try to always take care of the maintenance of it ourselves, even capital improvements or capital repairs on the building. We take care of that.
Yeah, and that's worth the capital repairs. If you look at an air handler going down, that can be pretty expensive, plus tuck pointing or the glass replacement. There's some large ticket items that is beyond your budget, and we need to look into having some money put to address some of those issues. I think if you do have a breakdown or more detail for the $60,000, you know, I would like to see that, whether you've got it here or want to send it later.
Just a second.
This has felt very awkward each year that we've done this, that they have to publish their budget before we do, so we don't... It's very hard to approve anything until we get our whole budget put together. Clearly, they have needs that, I mean, the library needs to be a priority, I think.
It does.
As Leonard mentioned, the pool, and that's another thing, because we've been using Quality of Life Funds as well for the pool. And as we've mentioned, we have some significant expenditures coming, especially where we have to, after we just did a review of the facility, we have to build a wall from the chemical building, which only, the wall now only goes about three-quarters of the way or so. We've got to extend that all the way up and add venting for that chemical. That's just one major thing, as well as, so it's those competing things that you have to kind of weigh against each other.
Yeah, the repairs to the building that are $6,000, the seals, unfortunately, on the new part of the building, have come loose and are leaking on, I don't remember how many, but four or five of the windows, and that was the estimate to repair them.
Well, I know you have a lot of vents at the library, and it's used by people of all ages. I've gone in numerous times, and it's just another part of the amenities that the city is responsible for, and to continue to find a funding source to make sure that the buildings and everything are in good working order. And it's, I mean, it's a process, and it's something that we continually deal with. But, I mean, I agree. I wish we had $60,000 laying around. We could make this happen, but it's something that needs to be addressed. I mean, it's a vital part of the community, and every time I go, there's always a ton of people in the library, so it's definitely being used, so...
There's a band playing tonight, if you want to go.
What time?
It's playing right now.
Oh, we want to go.
So when is your budget required to be completed?
I have to publish the budget. It has to be published mid-July, I think. It has to be in the newspaper, or we can't meet the rest of our deadlines.
Mid-July.
It's not, it's like the 10th or the 12th or something like that, I think.
What we almost need to do is, like, approve something like this, not for 2019, but 2020, so that we can get your input in, or get into our budget plan, and if we're going to approve it, improve it for the following year. And it's, right now, we don't know where we are, so it's hard to particularly $60,000 to approve that now and not know where we're going to be in other areas, so...
Could you approve that in a later commission meeting, this budget, after you get a chance to look at your capital projects?
Yeah, we can.
But not by mid-July necessarily.
I'm concerned about the repairs in particular.
Yeah. I know some of those broken windows have been broken since that big hailstorm.
That's actually not, yeah. There's three big holes in the windows.
Did insurance cover any of that from hail damage, or was this...
That's your insurance, so, it was my understanding that the insurance covered part of that, but that's your insurance company, so everything I know is hearsay, so I can't say for sure.
That was before your time?
That was before my time, yeah. It was the year before I came.
Is there a written dividing line that says, "X maintenance is the library, other maintenance is the city?"
There's not, because the library pretty much takes care of everything, unless it's a major capital, a major capitalist.
Didn't we agree last year to try to help with some of the maintenance items, or did I dream that?
No. I thought that was worth the $10,000 a few years ago, to do some maintenance. You know, that's, if the line isn't drawn, then something like that can get overlooked, and if we didn't apply to the insurance company, it was insurance-related, then both of us are out. But, you know, we need to know, so then, as we prepare our budget, we'll know what to include, and then you'll know where the limit, not picking up. The seals on the windows can kind of be building-related instead of user-related.
Well, I think the library and the city work really well, staff work really well together, and we communicate very well. So when things like the insurance come up, we, of something that we obviously know that there's going to be some insurance issues, we talk to them, and I think we're pretty well aware of what your insurance is going to cover, and the rest we try to handle ourselves.
Except the seal on a window is more of a maintenance item instead of an insurance item when the vinyl seal poles lose it. It's going to do it on aluminum windows eventually, you know, 10, 15 years, it's going to shrink, and it's going to come out. It's going to need to be reset.
We're going through our budgets right now, budget requests and so forth, and capital. I'm not sure we'd have, I'm just trying to think on our timing, whether, maybe by the first meeting in July, which would be before the mid-July, where you need to publish, we might have an idea of where that could fit in and what we could do. It's just a suggestion. We'll see if that can happen, but...
I'm not comfortable approving anything right now, because we just don't know, but I'm also not...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Don't approve it. Hopefully, I could do it by the first meeting.
Right. But I'm also not comfortable not approving it, because each year I've been on the commission, this has happened, that library comes to us and says, "This is what we really need." And we say, "Well, look at it. We get the budget. We get the budget. We have so many pressing items, we don't, I mean, we don't give them what they need, basically." And it's, I mean, we won the award for the top small-town library in the nation, and I just don't want to see it falling apart. I really want to make sure we're taking care of it, that we have the proper facilities for the kids. It seems like surely we can squeeze money out to help them get this project done somehow. Again, I don't, since I haven't seen this budget for next year, I don't know that, but...
Well, what I was wondering is if we separate the construction from the fixtures, if there's a way that we can come up with money to help for the construction?
Construction, but not the new shelves, shorter shelves?
And if we could get donations, or you could come with some grants, maybe, so that we could work together to get it done?
Yes, that's why I separated it out for you, so that you would be able to make those kind of decisions. Yes.
Great.
And we have no problems working to try and get grants. We try and grant grants for everything we do. We get like $15,000 worth of grants every year anyway, so we will continue to apply for those for anything and everything that we can get.
Yeah, the thing with going ahead and approving it tonight with not knowing some issues that, you know, with our 2016 audit, we came up with 500,000 discrepancy from ending to starting. We haven't got the 2017 audit to know where it is, so to make a commitment...
Right, where we can start.
You know, I don't feel comfortable. I, you know, I support what you're doing. I think we're very fortunate. You've gone into areas that have touched a lot of people, and it is one asset to the city that reaches across all barriers, and we do need to preserve that and do what we can. I think what I would hope is we could look and project into the future a little better so that we have the Quality of Life Fund addressing those entities that were originally covered in it, but be a little more aggressive on recognizing the maintenance and the change of programs and the actual cost of operating the systems. I know that was one of the things a few years ago at the library, we looked at the operating cost perceived at construction and the reality of cost of operation. The square footage and the manpower went up so much more than the original portion of the library, and it wasn't taken into consideration in some of our funding efforts, so...
We're currently working on a 10-year facility plan, so would you like us to, we're just starting it. Would you like us to share that with you when we get done? Because we need to address things like the phone system, which I think is 25, 30 years old, and a lot of other kinds of things that weren't even done at the time of the addition. Would you like us to share that with you? And we're drawing up to see if we can plan ahead and try and make sure that we take care of these things instead of coming to you, making sure that we have money for the heating and air conditioning systems, and so, but it'd probably be helpful to you if we just shared that with you when we got it done.
I think the staff could benefit from that information quite a bit, and looking where you're in the building every day, seeing and hearing, it would definitely help in looking at long-range planning.
Okay. You can do that. I'm not saying it'll be done tomorrow, Craig.
Hers isn't done yet either for this upcoming year, or six years.
So at this point, shall we take it into consideration?
Do you think we could give them an answer at our first meeting in July? Either yea or nay?
If we had a dollar dividing what would be for construction and what you would be able to fund in fixtures, and as soon as you could get that to Craig, that Craig could have it to look at what information he has, then he could bring it back to us the first meeting in July?
Okay, I can do that. Thank you. I appreciated this. Can I have that back?
Yeah. Now we see how you work.
Can you give copies for us?
Modified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, item B, consider receipt of property donation located at 309 Cypress.
I'm here representing First Oak Bank, who weren't able to attend this evening. And I apologize for the previous meeting not being able to be here to answer your questions, that's why they've asked for it to come back before you, for your, to reconsider. What they've done, if you remember, there was a house on there that had been condemned, and so First Oak Bank came to us before they tore it down, and asked, you know, "Is this a lot that you have an interest in from the Housing Authority?" And absolutely so, we do have an interest in it. It is in a great location, it's close to the school district, it's close, but, close to three of the four schools in the public school district, it's close to the park, the Ash Youth Center, so for family housing, which meets our mission, it's a good lot for infill housing. And we're currently getting ready to finish up with our Eisenhower subdivision, we've constructed our, we're almost finished with constructing our last seven homes, we have four out of those seven sold, so, in our plan, our next step in the Housing Authority's plan is to do some infill housing. And so this would be one of those lots that we would like to consider to do infill housing. We have a couple of other lots around Penteras that we have an interest in doing, and so that's kind of our next phase for new home construction, is to do infill. And we think that this would be one that would benefit our program, and, and a great location.
What would be the typical value of the home you would put on it?
Probably around 100 to 120,000. It would fit within the neighborhood. We actually have a three-bedroom, two-bath plan currently, that would fit on that lot.
And it would go well with the adjoining homes?
Mm-hmm. That lot's 85 by, yeah, if you wanna go to the next, it's 85 by 150, and the house plan that we have is 48 by 51, so it fits well within the setbacks, we wouldn't need any variances or anything.
And you're not losing money on these homes you're building, right? You're selling them at essentially cost, or is that, am I wrong on that?
On this one, because it's got the infrastructure on it, and there's gonna be minimal requirements that we're gonna need to make the lot ready, um, yes, we would probably be whole on this one.
So invest 120, sell it for 120, I'm just picking that number out of the air, but...
And, and that would be, yeah.
Then the property values are gonna go up from the value of an empty lot to a $120,000 home?
Currently, that, going by my calculations that I got from the county, that vacant lot's worth about $200 in ad valorem, so the ci, city each year get about 50 bucks off of it. If we're looking at what new construction and those taxes are coming in, around like the, what we're looking at is the Earl Design, or Elm Design on this, you're looking at about $2,000 in ad valorem taxes, so, yes, it would be taken off the tax roll, and I know that was a concern that you had, it'd be taken off the tax roll for a period of time, but, you know, once we had the house on it and sold, you're gonna be, you know, there's multiple reasons there that, that's beneficial. It's a great location, you're taking a vacant lot and turning it into a single-family home, you're providing a new home construction, you know, the majority of all of our housing stock's pre-1940, we have a challenge with people finding houses that they want here, because they don't find the new construction. There's just, you know, a lot of positives that we see in doing this, the Housing Authority does, so...
We've probably talked about this lot more than any other lot in the city.
Yeah.
Over and over and over. It's a great little neighborhood, and it is right by the school, I, I think it's a fabulous area.
Well, and you know, we went into this with First Oak, you know, they asked us before they demolished it if we had an interest, we said, "Yes, we do." They also went into it with the city, knowing that it was condemned, and, and taking care of that at their cost. You know, and this is part of their Community Reinvestment Act, you know, they have to be a good, good partner with the city, and this is one of those steps that they would be partnering to make an improvement in the community.
Does the gas line that runs through that alley and crosses that property, does that present a problem?
To my knowledge, it does not. We visited with, there should not be a utility issue, from what we were told. And I think one of your other questions, any property that the city holds on behalf of the Housing Authority, we, we manage and clean up and mow and take care of all that property. Actually, this would, this would not be at any cost to the city, unless if you're gonna look at 50, $50 a year in property taxes, that you're gonna lose while it's in a non-exempt status, until we can get the house on it and sold.
You think two or three years would be enough to make that happen, or...
I would say so. I mean, I know that, like I said, part of our plan, we have a long-range plan...
Right.
...to meet our mission, and, matter of fact, we've talked about it...
Yep.
...while you were on the board, that our next step was to do some infill housing, and so that is our next step. We're looking at doing anywhere from three to five over the next, hopefully, two years, but I'd bank on three. It seems to weigh, seems to go much longer than what I wish for things to go.
It seems like it would be a nice asset to the neighborhood, to me, and it is a cute little neighborhood, and a couple thousand dollars in taxes would be a bonus, too, and as you said, we, we have people that want new homes, and we don't have that many to offer, so...
Well, and, you know, we, we did just host a housing analysis, which I plan on sharing that with you next commission meeting. We were fortunate, we sent out about 50 invitations to businesses and HR, and our large corporations and small businesses, and realtors and bankers and all, and I'm happy to say, out of the 50 invites, we had 36 of 10. So it showed us that housing is a major issue for the community, and the feedback we got from them, this fits in, that feedback that we got from them of the need.
Yeah, housing is a, is an issue, and we've got a lot of, a lot of needs, a lot of empty lots in town, and, you know, there's, you know, I've, I've looked at, at what your, your mission is by, by statute, your organization, it's a pretty broad task you're trying to, to achieve. I don't know.
We can do it one house at a time, one project at a time. We can't do it all, but we can do, you know, and, you know, if you look at the Eisenhower subdivision, I will tell you, one, we get recognition all across the state, two, we get recognition all across the region. I've gone and visited with more commissions and, and communities and cities, we're, we're doing good things, and I can't take credit, that's my board, I've got an incredible board who really thinks outside the box, and sees the big picture, so...
I'm sorry, Leonard, I, as Leonard said, I know we've got empty lots all over the city, and it breaks my heart when I drive around my neighborhood and see some of these lots, but I truly think if you put a $120,000 home on some of those lots, you'd be lucky to get 60 for it, maybe not even that.
And part of what we're hoping to do is, you're, you're right, we can't build a 60 or an 80,000 home, I mean, you just can't. So what we hope that we're doing, and we saw that with some of the Eisenhower subdivision, what we're hoping is what we call the trickle-up effect. What we're doing is, we're building homes that, you know, somebody who's living in an 80,000 home can now afford a $120,000 home, so they move up, and those people who are in the 50 and 60,000 homes can now afford that 80,000 home. So that's what we're hoping we're doing, is doing a trickle-up effect, because we can't. I, I wish we could...
Yeah.
...but we, we can't.
Right. The appraiser tells me my house is worth exactly half of what I've got in it, so...
And part of the challenge is, is we do have low appraisals, you know, and so that, homes, new construction, it's a big challenge for them to appraise out, for the cost to construct, that's statewide, that's regional-wide, you know, multiple statewide, I mean, housing conferences, that's one of the things that we, is the biggest challenge for rural housing, is the cost of construction versus what it appraises out, there's a gap, and it's just the way it is.
The few houses, or the houses in that particular neighborhood, with the market the way it is now, they would probably, what they thought they might be worth, are probably bringing probably, what, $90,000?
You know, visiting with the realtors, if you visit with the realtors right now, houses are going like hotcakes. I mean, that's part of what we, you know, you hit that 100 to 150,000 threshold, if they're in good shape, you know, there's not, you know, a, a big, a challenge that we have is, is our housing stock is so old, and I can go in, and, you know, I'll visit with some, some renters in some of our units, as well as some of home buyers. I go buy an old home, I might only pay $600, you know, for my PITI, Principal Interest Taxes and Insurance, but I'm paying $800 in my utilities, because they're not energy-efficient, it's older construction, you can flip that, and I can pay $800 PITI and $400 in utilities, or $300 in utilities, because it's newer construction. Well, you just made them a lot more successful, in, you know, putting their money into a good investment. And so, you know, that's part of the challenge that we see with the older homes versus new construction, and our young people coming in, they expect a newer home, and we, we fight to keep them here and don't lose them across the border. I mean, that's something that we've gotten feedback from our HR departments time and time again, they're looking for new construction, and they can find that in Bartlesville.
Yeah, that's a dilemma, we've got too broad a spectrum, we've got the, the ones desiring new homes, and the ones that can't afford to renovate, or to make their home energy-efficient, and move up to a, to a home, so, you know, it's, that's, that's, I think the community's challenge of how, how do we address everyone, and with the Housing Authority, I guess that's kind of your, your task, to be able to go to somebody that's not gonna be able to upgrade from a $30,000 house to a $60,000 house, but they need a new roof, need new HVAC, need windows, how are they gonna have that accomplished?
And we're, we serve that program as well.
Yeah.
And we just finished up with a, a rehab grant, and we're getting ready to start three more. So, you know, we, we service new construction, we service rehab, we also help the city with demolition, so, I mean, we, we do serve...
Yeah.
...and we help with rent, so, I mean, we, we are covering what we can.
Right. More questions? Any questions? No more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the donation of the lot located at 309 Cypress on behalf of the Independence Housing Authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carried.
Okay. I appreciate your time, and I apologize I wasn't here.
Oh, no problem, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item C, cereal malt license for Mariachi Grill, 1901 West Main, Independence, Kansas. So, we've got the application, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to approve a several malt beverage license for Mariachi Grill LLC at 1901 West Main Street.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is the audit update.
We have some items pulled off.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. No, I'm glad you did, I... Okay, item D, consider request to restrict onsite parking in the area of the new Veterans Freedom Square, item, it was item D on the consent agenda. On this, my, do you have the math?
Yes, I do.
What I was reading in your, your definition is just the yellow line is where you're proposing to restrict the parking?
That's the request that was given to me, yes.
Okay, well, I was out there today, and had some other people comment, the south, where you've got the no parking symbol?
Correct, yes.
Right in there, from Depot Avenue is on the right, and Mickey Mantle Way is the top, okay, the, the south side of Mickey Mantle Way, because of the topography, vehicles parked on the south side, they create the same issue there, there were some trucks coming down, and there were vehicles parked on both sides, and they were having difficulty navigating through there, and I thought, you know, I, I see what you're, you're trying to do there, and there's been a problem there, but maybe we need to also eliminate the parking on the south side of, of the Mickey Mantle Way.
I certainly, I certainly agree with you on that, Mayor, because that was actually brought up in our staff meeting today, and that, that was a question, was why, why don't we include that in there if we're going to bring this to the commission? And I, I said, "Well, the short answer is, because I did this last week, and you didn't say that last week," so, you know, I'm just kidding, but, as the request came to me, you know, we, at, at the scene, discussed it with the veterans that were there, and with park staff that were there, and ADA coordinator was there, and anyways, that was a request that was given to me, and I, looking back now, I, I agree, I think we should add that into the, to the plan, I think it's, it's necessary, and the, long and the short of it is, it's necessary. I'm not sure if maybe park staff parked there, and maybe that's why that request wasn't given to me, I don't know, but, uh...
Well, it's...
I, I think that'd be a wise move to do that.
When you mentioned the school buses, I was out there during the end of school, and saw what you were talking about, that it is difficult for them, the radius is very tight for a school bus, and then when you put parking on both sides, you do create, and you're in a park atmosphere with children running out, and, you know, I, I think we should consider adding the parking restriction on the, the south side of Mickey Mantle Drive or Boulevard.
I absolutely think that's the way to go. And that was kind of the city staff consensus today, was that that should have been included from the start.
That was the only thing I was wanting to, to bring up, and, and mention that we do include that, I don't know.
Sounds good to me.
What the other commissioners...
Probably just a slight modification to the motion in front of you can, can take care of that.
So, if you want, I'll make a motion that we restrict parking or, on the east side of Depot Drive, the north side of Mickey Mantle Way, and also the south side of Mickey Mantle Way, north of the miniature train, that area.
South side.
Yeah, south side of Mickey Mantle Way, north, north of the miniature train, yeah, try.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item G, consider bids received for utility trucks. I had a question, when, on the budget impact, we had the $60,000 in the 2018 budget, but the encumbered funds from 2017 to 25,000, where we came up short to 500,000, how did that affect...
Mike's not here, but I, again, I don't think we came up short 500,000 when we got the final numbers with the audit, we'll have to get back on that, but, we're not short any money that I'm aware of.
Well, it was...
But this was encumbered, this was encumbered. But this was encumbered, this was encumbered because we didn't buy the truck, you know, last year when it was budgeted, but, but I can't, I guess I can't answer that question, because I don't, I know there was a...
Well, I wasn't for sure how that five hundred thousand affected, because the ending balance showed us with five hundred thousand more than what the beginning balance, and I wondered how that, how that trickles down to all the other accounts when we're going to carry over...
Well, there, there was some things encumbered again, and that trickles down. The total, I couldn't tell you, this is part of that. I think the total is actually, now that I think about it, all the encumbrances from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen was around a hundred thousand, but I can't remember, I can't tell you that for sure. I can get that back to you, I can get, get an answer to that. But this was carried on specifically for that, for that vehicle, since we didn't purchase it last year.
Because that's what, it wasn't clear, we, we got the, the audit and then the two treasures reports, where that money was off, it just gave us a total. I didn't know if that's encumbered money from capital improvements or just where, where it was.
It was from capital improvements. This, this, this was where it was budgeted in the capital line.
Okay. Then, these are, are for enterprise fund use, so, is the money in those two budgets already that it comes out of there and it doesn't affect the capital improvement project?
Well, these are all, these are all out of the utility fund, all this money, this encumbrance and everything, since the utility trucks, they're all from the utility fund that carry over. So, when you were talking about the five hundred thousand, that was general fund, we kind of mixed that up, but this is all utility fund.
Yeah.
I apologize for not making that clear, but, but yeah, this is all utility fund money that was budgeted in the utility fund capital line items.
Okay.
From two thousand seventeen and twenty eighteen.
Well, that, that was where I was confused, where capital improvement plan, and I was reading it as capital improvement money, and then the confusion with the enterprise fund, that we should be charging our rates in these enterprise funds for vehicle replacements, so if that's the case, then the money is really coming from the enterprise fund, that shouldn't have had a problem with any encumbrances or any of those questions I had there, too.
It wasn't a problem, and it's just that the truck was not purchased last year, so we carried that money over to, so we could buy it this year. It was programmed last year, the money was there, so it just encumbered that money instead of trying to buy it out of two thousand eighteen, which we've already programmed.
But it is out of the enterprise fund.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's out of the water fund.
Okay. Automatic start?
Oh. It's, uh...
It's nice, yeah. Get that thing warm before you have to go out.
But it's not on the truck that we're buying, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that in the spec.
I was going through and throwing things out of it, just trying to throw specs together.
Yeah, doesn't hurt to ask for, no.
Can't blame the guy for trying.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that was my, my question with the capital improvement and the industrial funds, so, okay. The, the other commissioners, any questions on the vehicles?
No, I don't.
With that, then I'll entertain a, a motion.
Make a motion that we move to approve the purchase of the water treatment plant and meter reading, meter reader trucks to Roman Chevrolet in the amount of fifty one thousand eight hundred dollars, and the purchase of the water treatment plant truck to Quality Toyota in the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
That was the wastewater treatment plant truck, right?
Yeah, wastewater treatment plant truck.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Terry.
Thanks, Terry.
Now, the audit update?
All right, I handed out a couple pages there that gives you an update. I know you haven't had a chance, obviously, to go through it at this, at this time, but if you want me to go through it, I, I can, let's say, Mike had a family item that he had to take care of today, so I could go through and try to answer questions as best I can. It's pretty straightforward.
Why don't we, why don't, it'd be easier to let us read it than next commission meeting, bring up the questions.
Okay. I, I do have a copy for the meeting, but it's also, it'll be online tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be better use of time, let us read it and then bring it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I, I do have a, a comment. I, I just glanced through this, and as far as a, a similar sized community that uses ZENCODE, Chinook does.
Just about every city around here uses ZENCODE.
Okay.
Chinook, Coffeyville, they, they all, we've talked to, so.
Okay. I've, I've been talking to them, too, so I, I knew they did, I didn't know whether, whether you were aware of that also.
Yeah, yeah, we've been checking around.
Any other questions for that right now?
No.
We'll, we'll read it and see where we are next commission meeting. City Board minutes, any questions concerning the Independence Rec Commission or planning and zoning? Board minutes?
None.
The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
I have a couple of things I'd like to report, good things. The first thing is, as you know, we have to have an annual inspection of our rides in the park, the carousel and the train, as required by state law now, and we had that completed today by a certified inspector, and Barb is here if you have any questions, but we passed with flying colors, because obviously, you know, we've done some major work on the carousel, and he was very impressed, I'm told, with the carousel, how it runs so smoothly and everything, so it passed. And so we'll forward that, his report on to the state as we, as required. That was great. Another one to talk about is downtown trees. I don't know how many, we have a hundred plus trees in the, a hundred and sixteen trees that we have to obviously maintain and watch, and sometimes we get reports of, of trees growing north when they should be growing south, or straight up at least, and, and we try to fix those when we can. Uh, just, Barb did a walk, walked through the, all the areas on the street, just, was it Monday, I think, Monday did? Because we do that audit, she, to find out what's, what's missing. Uh, we had nine trees we needed to, to replace this year, and we've done four of them already. Uh, we're doing about two a day, and so we have five more to do, will be placing some of those trees. We had one tree damaged by the storm. The trees I'm talking about, replace those nine, those are no cost to us to replace. We, we do all the work ourselves, but the tree itself is no cost from TLC. But the tree that was damaged by the storm, of course, will be our cost to do that, so we'll get that, get that done. Also, we've done watering of all the trees, twenty gallons per tree, sounds like a lot of water per tree, but soak it up pretty good. Yeah. And, let's see, oh, talking about some of those trees that are leaning the wrong way, like the one Gary reported to us, we put a wire on, you know, wire to straighten it out, and the, the first time we did it, it actually pulled the wire out, the stakes out of the ground, so we had to redo it. And so we've got a few of those, and we're doing those, and there was one in front of Uncle Jack's, is that right, that, that somebody just cut the wire?
Yeah, they cut the wire. The one in front of Uncle Jack's and the one in front of Tentril, Twala said just pull up and she'll replace them. We don't know why they're doing that, but she said it could be the root system, but she, she's willing to replace them. And that'll be our last one, because the ones that the trees planted that we have now, so, you know, out of a hundred and sixteen trees, you don't have issues, you know.
Yeah. So we're, the point is, we're, Park's doing a great job working through it and trying to maintain and keep abreast of everything, of all the trees in their condition. I just want to acknowledge Jim Hogan, he's like the super volunteer, has done a great job volunteering with, for Barb, and, and helps a lot with these trees as well, so just like to acknowledge him.
Yeah. I noticed some of them, the staking was in the opening, those grates make it really difficult to secure the tree, and when it's in that close, you're just in the rip ball and things can shift. It's kind of a, a problem to get them guide, and the wind we've had is really, really a challenge, like you say, a hundred and twenty-some trees, that's real difficult.
There's a couple of them that are on, you know, like, a couple on Tom.
It is, yeah. Okay.
Couple of them look like they went to the pub crawl.
Crawling north, huh?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes, I do. I had sent an email to Craig earlier, and I had some questions brought out by the public concerning our nuisance abatements and the procedure that we follow, that I've had complaints about tall grass, and I understand the reasoning behind it, you know, like I said, we had a, a cold April, and we went from a cold month to summer, and I know the grass is, it's pretty much gotten out of hand everywhere, you know. I don't care how often you cut your yard. So I've had some people come up to me and have some questions about that, and I've been able to drive some of the neighborhoods, and some of the areas are pretty, pretty excessive, not only in the grass, but in overgrown brush and trees that, actually, you don't even see the, the floor of the property anymore, there's a show of overgrowing. And I've been through the south part of Independence, and from about Ninth Street all the way down to Coffeyville Avenue, and from Main Street back south, so, and there's quite a bit of property. So, I think if we could have someone give an overview of the city's policy, so people that watch this meeting can understand what's involved in it, and why there's so many lots we have to maintain, and with a limited staff, it's going to take us a while to get through all these lots, but we are, we are working on the process, and we've, it's not like we're not doing it, we're just overwhelmed right now. So I, I believe Dave Cowens is going to make a presentation.
Yes, in, Mr. UCC, in regards to the nuisances and the grass, as I kind of put in the email this morning, we implemented a new system, we're trying to get paperless and make the system more efficient and work well, so we've pretty much got that in place, and just now the guys are getting out and getting it implemented. As I said earlier, the sys, with the weather, the grass got ahead of us, and we are behind, and we are trying to get caught up with that. So, is there some specific details on the process that you would like to know about?
Yeah, if you would just kind of go through what, what was sent to me, just...
Oh, as far as the process.
The process involved, the people that watch this, they'll understand what, what takes place.
When a captain goes out and he drives the neighborhoods, or we receive a phone call on tall grass, our process is, is we go out, we identify the lot through the system tablet, they take a picture, which automatically then brings up the parcel listing of that. A letter is generated, and that is sent via certified mail, which allows us, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, at the end of the year, that process then allows us to collect the money through the property taxes if they do not pay the bill. So we have to send a certified letter. A lot of these people live out of state that have these vacant properties. There's a ten-day waiting period, so ten days have to go by, and then the fire department goes back out, observes the grass, takes another picture, again, identifying that it is tall, and at that point, a work order is then submitted to the street department to mow it. So, from that process, once it's mowed, the street guys take a picture, work order is completed, it then routes itself to Lydia, then they will generate a bill to the customer or to the property owner. If that bill is not paid, then, I think it's at the end of the year, isn't it, Leonard, a, it'll come to you guys to put it over on the property taxes. For a nuisance...
Usually, don't we have a resolution or an ordinance to issue on all the properties at one time?
I think that has to go in September to county, in order for it to get out of town.
Right.
For a nuisance, again, it's either received via complaint, or it's observed by the fire department, police officers give us nuisance, anybody can report a nuisance. We again go out, take a picture of it, a certified letter is sent to the residents, they're given fifteen days to correct it. A lot of times, if they will just call and work with us, we will work with them as long as they are diligently working. Sean's very good about working, helping people get it cleaned up. But if they make no efforts, after fifteen days, it is sent to municipal court, and Jeff can kind of tell you the process there, I don't know, do you do a long form that is, has to be served by the police officer, and we at times have citizens that avoid getting served, and that's where I sit in there, sometime, I've seen it take upwards of six months before an officer can serve a summons to court, just trying to get somebody served. They then go in front of the judge, our judge is very good, there's a fine, he, a lot of times will have a penalty per day till they get it cleaned up. He works with the fire department, who goes out and verifies it's been cleaned up and the nuisance is handled. We have a, what's called a health situation, where it's a danger to the public, we can take some immediate action, get it cleaned up, we send a letter, sometimes giving them twenty-four hours to work on or get it taken care of. We will go in as a city, take care of it, and then build a resident back. And there's a process, we work, we always get Jeff involved in those situations to make sure we're handling it correct. I don't know Jeff is, because you always kind of help us through those when we have that situation.
So that would be like raw sewage or excessive trash like food that's attracting rats and other?
Yes. We've had some severe infestations that were a severe health issue, that it just needed to be cleaned up immediately. We make contact with the owners and what's going on, and get it cleaned up and taken care of, and that's assessed back to the property owner.
So as far as grass and tall weeds, ten days, that certified notice, we check the property in ten more days, and then a work order is generated, so you're looking at probably a month, thirty days later, hopefully, if, if, if it can get into the...
That initial, that initial takes that ten days, because we have to give that notice. Once we've done it one time, after that, then we can just start mowing it, we don't have to give them notice anymore.
Okay.
So that first start of the year, it kind of gets backlog, waiting for us to do those checks, make the proper notification, so that you guys can assess it back on the property taxes.
Okay. My other question that I, I thought of while coming to the meeting, not necessarily concerning nuisance, but it has, had to do with brush pickup. And I know that, I see where they're picking up a lot of brush. Are the orders still, are they being picked up by being called in, or are they also taking the initiative to, if they go by and they're working in an area, and they know the address at the end of the block hadn't called in, but they have brush, are they calling in to create an order to pick up brush while they're there, or they're, or they're just waiting until the property owner calls and says, I saw you out there, I didn't call, could you come back out, pick up my brush?
I believe that's the process, but, but maybe Mike can answer, those street crews, if they...
Have work off work orders, you can carry the work orders first. If you don't, you can just start picking up random, people that did call in, took time calling in, and then you can target them.
Right. I, I understand that. I, I guess Mike's concern was if you're already in a block where there is brush adjacent to a property, and I know that bogs down the process, but, but like I said, where I worked at, if we, they kept track of generated orders. So, we got credit for so many orders that we would work a day. So if we, we saw a situation, and yeah, it went and figured into the work schedule for that day, but if we saw it, and we were there, and it was... day, but if we saw it, and we were there, and it was next door, and it was something that we could address, we would address because we were already on site, and I guess that's what I was getting at. Okay.
Especially difficult now with the storm, we're so much down.
Sure.
It would really slow us down, I'd say, so the priority is the ones that've called in. I'm one of them. At least my wife called in.
Well, and you don't have to call in, you can go on the website, and there's that, it says request a service.
Yep.
And you can turn it in on that. You can also use your mobile phone, the city, we have a City of Independence app, it's available for Android and for the Apple, at the Apple Store, and you can actually do it through that app, you can turn these in, you can even take a picture of it and send it along with their work order if you want to, like, hey, here's my brush, come pick it up, you know? You can even do that. Or if people are turning it in, like even a high grass or something, they can take a picture of the lot, say, hey, there's high grass here, they don't have to send a picture, but they can. And a lot of, a lot of the work orders that we get are generated through the website too, and Lydia's really good on getting right on those and getting those generated. So, you know, they don't have to call in, they can do it from their phones, whatever's more convenient for them.
I liked when I submitted one a month ago or something, that they responded right back to me and said, "We have your work order and we'll get right on it."
Yes, Lydia's very good at that.
I'm the commissioner, that's true. Maybe they only do that for me.
No, she's, I get a copy of all those, and Lydia's really good about getting on those within usually a business day or so unless she's gone or something.
Do they need to request, or can they just call the 2-500, 3-3-2-2-500?
If they call 3-3-2-2-500, it's option one for the clerk's office, so they can do that, or they can go on the website, or they can go on their mobile phones with the city app, and you just, on the app, you just search for Independence KS or Independence Kansas, and it'll come up with the city logo, install that app, and you'll have the app on your phone, you can do it that way as well.
And I understand here there are approximately over 200 nuisance yards that.
Typically, in a year, we're going to mow about 200.
200.
Two to three times a year.
And it's out of the street department, and with six employees, you're, how many people are you having out of those six mow?
We have two, two hundred and two hundred in a day, and one, one in a show.
Okay. So I guess my point is, for people that are watching this, that with over 200 properties and a limited amount of manpower that's actually manning mowers.
Plus, where you're sitting, the city mows, you push your back.
Right, so it may take a while, so it's not that you're being neglected, it's just that there's only so many yards you can cut in a day with X amount of people. Just want to make sure people understand that.
It's hard to understand when you live next to one, though.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is. I agree. Let me see if there was anything else. I think that kind of answers my questions. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Did I ask you if you had any questions?
No, I do, thank you. Thanks for asking. I'd like to continue along the same thought. Are we expecting a significant cost to the city for this recent storm? I've noticed the crews have been out very aggressively cleaning up streets and things.
Obviously, it adds to our workload, I couldn't give you an estimate what it's added.
Okay.
Is it?
Just have the salaried people working extra time, since we don't have to pay them overtime.
We do all the time.
Also, since Barb is here, Barb, I had one person question me or say that they felt like the animals were affected by the fireworks, the animals at the zoo, is that, has there been any evidence of that, or?
Yes, yes, I actually was on the end of the one-way last year, and I wouldn't say, well, it depends on what you call affected, but I have a huge concern that they were shot, and they've been shot there. Now, naturally, everybody says to me that they've done it for years, it's no harm, but when I stood at the end of the one-way and watched, and watched the animals, because I was concerned about them, it felt like it was World War II. It was, it opened my eyes, because I've always been in the park area, and I didn't really realize it was so dramatic there.
So.
And so I have a concern. We had our female elk and that, and they were running around, our tommy or male elk didn't seem to care, he just kept looking up and this, you know, he seemed fine. We had a baby deer at the time, and she had ended herself, we locked her up in this stall to, you know, kind of protect, we took the bears in, we tried to do as much as we can, but I totally think it's, I wish we could find another place that we could shoot them off just for the safety of the animals.
Okay.
I have a huge concern about it. I know it's been done for years, and nothing has happened, but, you know, there could always be a time, and that could, something could happen.
Well, it seems like we have other areas of the city that might serve just as well, I mean, it doesn't have to be done there.
I mean, it's a great lot to do it, don't get me wrong.
Yes, absolutely.
But that close, and last year, one of them fell over, and I think of this scenario of, you know, how high does it shoot up in the air? If it fell down and shot into, right towards the elk pen, started on fire, we have elk, llama, and bison, and we go charging because fire, because the fear of animals and fire. I don't, those bison, if they have that fear factor in them, they'll go right through that fence, I mean, that's not going to hold them.
Have we, have we looked at alternatives in the past?
We, I brought it up at the park board, and we talked about it, and I also talked to Jim Kelly. I kind of stopped it when I did that, because I was getting such opposition from them, that, you know, we've always done this, years passed, I just wanted to voice my opinion because if something did happen, I wanted to let them know that I had a concern, a deep concern for our animals, and I think that we should try to explore shooting them off somewhere else.
Yeah, it seems like, just at least look, maybe at the college or at the lake, or, I don't know.
We were thinking, at the soccer field there, off of Peter Pan Road, the high school, I think there's too many homes, we've looked at the other, the baseball field down there is too low, we have talked about other options, and I would love to have positive input with it, because I feel that is, you know, I don't want to wait till something happens.
Right, okay.
You know, and hopefully, nothing does, but that's my concern.
All right, thank you, Barb. I still have two more, Mr. Mayor. The condemned houses that we were going to demolish, do you know a schedule on that by any chance?
We'll have to check on that.
Okay, I just wondered, I haven't seen any action.
They can update.
Dave knows? Hey, Dave.
As far as this is done, I believe we are ready, probably not next week, but the week after, those houses should be coming out.
Oh, fantastic.
So we're within two weeks.
Yahoo, thank you, sir.
Yeah, we had signed contracts, that might have been the week you were gone.
I knew we had signed contracts, I just wondered how soon we might see some action. Thank you. Also, in the expenses tonight, I saw a check for a lot of money for our insurance, like $400,000.
Which insurance, the health insurance?
That's what I wasn't sure about.
I'll have the check on that.
Okay, I just wondered, it seemed like a gosh awful lot of money.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if we were doing everything we could to minimize that cost, whether there's any other things we could do to minimize our insurance, our liability costs.
There are things you can do, raise your deductible, raise your, lower your, you can, some things, but we're actually, I'm actually meeting with our liability insurance carrier next week, and we go over that every year, but one of the things we need, one of the things we need to add this year, speaking of insurance, is cybersecurity. I don't know if you read that article, saw that article, where the City of Atlanta that was attacked, cyber attack, they just had to approve another $9 million to fix, to try to fix there, and that's just to fix the system, not accounting all the time they've lost, that they've lost their systems. So it's something we need to, we need to, and so that's cybersecurity insurance, and I don't know if you remember when we talked about our software system, ENCODE, financial software system, and upgrading it to more user-friendly, but the major reason to upgrade it is for cybersecurity. Anyway, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'll check into that.
All right, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public concerns. We have two requests, Ned Stickman, you want to address, huh? Yeah. Ned, you want to combine them into one?
He could do a request on every item on the agenda separately, but on the public concerns, he's just.
But it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
You know, he can ask, and we tell him no. So you got your three minutes, you got to combine them.
My name's Ned Stickman, and I've invested about as much as anybody in the downtown area, and I'm not griping about city employees or the folks that work hard and are underappreciated, but the downtown inspections are really, to me, kind of a joke, and I've gone through about three or four of them, and they're a joke bordering on extortion. I mean, they, they come through, it's kind of a bullying and harassment type thing, and they send you nasty letters, and they take pictures of your property, and they say, I just got one on Monday, I usually try not to open these for a couple of days, just because I'm figured, but, like, here's a picture, you know, of a window that I've been working on, and it's a lot easier to work on them when you take them out. Actually, I had some help on that one with, with the windstorm. Apparently, we had a little burst of wind that came down Laurel Street, because I understand that we lost a couple of the veterans right there at that location also. But anyway, we run around, we, you know, I've received letters on these that are addressed to, I mean, they said I own property that I didn't own, they come by, they don't notify the locals, this letter, you know, said that I need to talk to the, to the Independence Historical Society, which there is none, as far as I know. We have an Independence Historical Preservation and Resource Commission that I've served on as a, as a city representative, and back in those days, we didn't want to deal with everybody's window that was broken, and have to approve everybody's window. But anyway, as I say, it's just, it's more of a kind of a harassment thing, it's pretty obvious that they're not really inspecting anything, that they just go through and look for stuff to make sure that you know that, that they're in charge. Now, I must say that the fire safety folks that came through when they did vintage, Sean was, Sean was real nice, he pointed out some things. That's the way it used to be, I mean, he used to come by the Science Center, and they'd say, well, you really ought to change that extension cord there to have an electrician put in a circuit, and, and so we would take those, we'd take it. I mean, they give you 30 days to solve it. I don't even get the bill in 30 days, let alone prove that we've done it, so, I mean, most of them are already taken care of, but as I say, it really is, and what you could do, you could scrap that program, and you could give that money to the library, so you wouldn't have to worry about it. I mean, they need $60,000, which is really beneficial to the community, whereas the inspections just take up a lot of city people's time and do very little good, so that's what I wanted to make sure you knew. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ned.
Thank you, Ned.
There were no other requests, so that brings us to part of adjournment, so with that, I'll, we can consider meeting adjourned.